What I started saying is that we have a bit of a hybrid system that we're using. And that is that those that wish to participate in person can attend the emergency management, the meeting by going to the emergency management building here on Carter Street. And those that don't wish to participate by Zoom can do so that way as well. And we offer six foot distancing here at emergency management. And the next thing that I said is that the limits the school committee statement. And that is that this committee represents the needs of all public school students and places their interests above all others. We'll exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of available information. We'll advocate for each of our students and support high quality public education here in the city of Leamont St. In a minute, we'll have the public forum. It's an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on the matter specifically listed on the school committee agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific items they wish to speak to. Each member, each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within two minute timeframe. The committee will not be responding to or answering any questions. And we have, I believe, some that signed up to speak remotely and some in person. Also, what I'm working on and I'll send to you in the next week. And then for the next meeting, you can tell me what you think about it. But it basically outlines the roles, responsibilities and duties of the school committee. And I think sometimes people aren't exactly sure exactly what it is that the school committee is responsible for. So I have a pretty good outline of that and that should be ready for the next committee meeting. All right. At this point, I'd like to open it up to a public forum. Would anyone like to address the committee? I believe Madam Secretary, we have a couple of names listed. So you want to call them in order as they were signed up?
The first one is Daniel Turk. If you're on Zoom, unmute yourself and state your name.
My name is Daniel Turk, T E R K. I live at 10 Sheldon Hill Drive. Any other info you need, or is that okay?
No, that's good. That's good. Thank you. Go ahead.
So I'm joining tonight because I wanted to discuss the agenda item of the masking policy in the school system. My son is in the Leamont St. School System. I myself am a physician in the UMass Healthcare System, working at Leamont St. Hospital. And I'm concerned about the potential to eliminate the masking policy in our schools. As most people know, masks have been well documented to reduce and prevent the transmission of viral infections, including COVID-19. The CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics strongly endorses and recommends the use of masks in school. The CD, the American Academy of Pediatrics goes on to say that face masks can be safely worn by all children of two years of age and older, including the vast majority of children with underlying medical conditions with rare exceptions. My personal experience with my three and six year olds have been that masks have not been a huge issue and they have been a part of everyday life, like putting their hats on when they go outside to play in the winter. Masks, even tighter fitting masks like KN95s have not limited my children's ability to have fun, express themselves and to be kids. I think the possible elimination of the mask mandate in our school systems would be short sighted and would put our children, their families and our excellent school staff at risk. I do look forward to the day when we can all take off our masks. But until that time, I hope the committee, committee recognizes the weight of the science and decides to continue to keep our children safe by wearing masks for the remainder of the school year. Thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you for taking your time. We much appreciate it.
The next person is Nikki Turpin.
Could I just, could I just say, name and the street that you live on is fine. You don't have to give your exact address.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon, good evening. Justin.
You're doing so well, it's repeating it three times.
Okey dokey. As it remains, the Massachusetts mask mandate is still in effect until February 28th, 2022, with the potential that nothing changes unless 80% of our community is fascinated. This is still, there's still no fasting for kids younger than five, meaning students can bring COVID home, causing lifelong COVID effects for their younger siblings and possibly even their caretakers. While I understand some newly elected members are on a platform of being able to remove mask mandates from schools, authority which they do not currently have, and I understand that they are likely being called to task by the constituents who voted them in, I think it's important for us to understand what in fact they are asking. Currently, 832 students were impacted by COVID just this January and 130 staff members. What they're asking is underprivileged marginalized communities to take on potentially missed work burden, which financially may, they may not be able to, so that their kids can be comfortable and happy. If we are here to discuss mental wellness, then maybe we should discuss the impact of grief and how ludicrous it is to administer standardized testing in a current environment for students who are barely getting by because of increased anxiety, trauma and grief. I would highly suggest that if newly elected parties are concerned about mental health, they start looking into how we can better support students in terms of suicidal ideation, depression and anxiety. A mask is not causing these issues. A pandemic and a lack of resources to counterfact it are. An investment in social emotional learning that allows students to really access care, to me as an educator for the last 15 years, is what is most important in this moment, as we try to get back to a sense of normalcy. If we are really discussing removing the mask mandate, then all codes should be removed. How about dress codes, which more often than not specifically target female identifying students? But if you really truly want to talk about making our school systems better, how about we start with the fact that during Hispanic Heritage Month and now Black History Month, there's not a single school announcement or banner or program outside of possible individual classrooms to celebrate students of color. Let's address the fact that BIPOC teaching faculty and staff is less than 4%, even though the student body is more than 40%. Again, an issue that if dressed could actually serve to all for cultural awareness within the LPS school system. If the school committee actually delved into these questions and issues, we might see a district that actually succeeds for all parties. As a parent and educator, I'm highly invested in the success of my child, but also everyone else's. Before I assume, I would love to hopefully think that everyone sitting here has been an actual teacher or worked in the educational position. One sentence, there are people sitting here choice, making choices for our schools and our safety who aren't informed enough to make these choices and they have never been in education. And it's time for us to start questioning what their actual goal is. From the viewpoint of the seasoned educator, it doesn't seem to be the one that has intentions for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the committee, I apologize for the actions that were taken by some last week as you exited the building. I assume I'm on mute, so I'm gonna take this off. But anyway, I apologize because you are nothing but professional and kind and express your thoughts. And whether people agree or disagree, it gives no one any reason at all to act in an manner which only a few acted. So on behalf of the committee, we apologize for that. And I think there were a couple of members that were out there to help you and we thank them as well. So our apologies, anyone is, is, anyone is invited to come to any of our meetings and speak. And the reason we limit it is because there are times when there are a lot of speakers. If you take 20 speakers, multiply that by two minutes, it adds up. And so we want to give everyone a fair opportunity. And the, the, the critical point to remember is that oftentimes, not everyone is here to speak on the same subject, on the same platform and have differences of opinion. And that's fine and we encourage that. That's what the school committee encourages. We want people to come to the meeting. We want them to express their thoughts and share with us because it helps us to think and get a better idea of, of what you're thinking. And it's very important to us. So we want to encourage that, not discourage it. Okay, our next.
The next speaker is Paula Hashig. Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Go ahead. I'm gonna mute myself right now. All right, so everyone's gonna lower the volume and mute themselves. And then we invite Paula as our next speaker. Paula, we're gonna mute, you unmute.
Okay. I think I'm good. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So I'm here today just to, I have two kids in the Leamont St. School System and I'd like to address the agenda item about potentially unmasking the kids. And I'll just say, echo, you know, our last two speakers, I also can't wait for the day that we no longer need masks. But that day has not come yet. Just today on ABC News, doctors warned, as did Dr. Turk, that governors rolling back mask mandates was too soon. The title of that article is Doctors Warn Ending School Mask Mandates Will Lead to a Rise in COVID Cases, reported by Mary Kikatos, which I'm sure I'm mispronouncing, but if you're interested, that full story is there with data behind it. From a very personal perspective, I have a really hard time understanding those of you who are pushing for the mask removal as if it's a matter of life and death. The opposite is actually true. There's a risk to those who cannot be vaccinated due to their health complications. There's a risk to those that are too young, like my son, to be eligible to be vaccinated. And I worry every day that my elementary school kids may bring home the virus to him and that his life may be at risk. Masks are the one thing that make me feel okay taking that calculated risk, balancing what's best for the older kids and doing what's best hopefully for the baby. And if we remove masking, I don't know if I could keep my kids in school as remote options aren't, aren't available anymore. I would need to ultimately leave my job to tutor my children. Further, unmasking kids only perpetuates the challenge to our healthcare system. My heart breaks for the relentless pressure of my friends and family in healthcare. They're breaking emotionally, mentally and physically. And I know that's not for this committee necessarily to concern themselves with, but as humans, we should, we should think about that. We should be more considerate of those people who have to care for us. Isn't the inconvenience of masking worth potentially saving the life of my baby, of other people? Isn't it worth stopping the spread so that we can move past the pandemic and past masking, helping our healthcare workers? We fundamentally do not understand, I'm finishing up, thank you. I just fundamentally don't understand how some can be so selfish. And I challenge those of you who are to look deep into humanity. Do you really want, want to save these lives? And to those of you who are on the committee who are supporting unmasking, I ask you especially, does anything that I just said resonate with you? If not, I suggest you evaluate your why, because to me, it seems like you're in the business of self-service and not public service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers? Does anyone else like to address the committee?
Yes.
Once again, we'll check.
Does anyone want to address the committee? Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Can you hear me?
There's a Rob with an iPhone. Who's that?
Yeah, Rob Volpe, 22 Lane.
Okay, Rob, I'm gonna, we're gonna mute ourselves in the floor.
Okay, keep it short and sweet, so I really don't have a whole lot prepared. You know, I really asked the committee to look in a, come, maybe a compromise to some degree, where we do some research or do our diligence on one way masking. There's nothing wrong with masking if that's what you want to do to protect your family and that's what you feel is right. But also there's another side of the coin where others feel it's not okay and it's not conducive. That's Rob's leave it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Once again, is there anyone either remotely or in person that would like to address this? Well, wait a minute, just in case, because we're trying to make sure that we've gotten everybody that might be interested. In the meantime, let me just remind everyone that the only thing that's on the agenda is mask policy. And that is because one of the members brought to our attention that the mask policy hasn't been updated and, and was done some time ago. And this is just the review of the policy. So there is no, there's nothing on the agenda to either remove the masks or to change it at all. All it is, is a review of the policy. And that will be referred to the policy committee, just so everybody understands. Okay, one more time, is anyone like to address the committee? One last time. Okay, we'll close this portion of the meeting. We'll now move on to communications. Is there any super, are there any communications, Mr. Riley?
There are no communications at this time.
Thank you, sir. And do you have a report at all tonight?
Yes, I was just gonna reiterate some of the messages that the superintendent sent out this past Sunday.
Sure.
First of all, we would like to thank some of our representatives, State Representative Natalie Higgins, Senator John Cronin and Congressman McCovey for their advocacy for public education. Due to these individuals, the district was able to secure an additional $650,000 for our schools. With the money, it's planned that we'll be purchasing new portable classrooms, updated HVAC systems at Bennett, water filtration stations across the district, and early childhood feasibility study. These are projects that we've been waiting a long time to fund and it's exciting that we'll now have money to move on with these endeavors. I also like to remind the public that kindergarten registration is now open. There is a quick link that you can find on our webpage to learn how to do that process through our parent information center. And then also, there is a CPAC workshop on managing challenging behaviors presented by Fadi Kuzmani, BCBA for the district. We'll be discussing how to manage challenging behaviors and provide de-escalation techniques and resources for the home. The link to sign up for the workshop, which will be this Wednesday, February 9th at 6:30 PM, was provided in the superintendent's communication on Sunday. It's, Mr. Kazami is excellent and so if anyone's interested, that would be a great opportunity to hear him speak. And then lastly, we would like folks to know that if you are still interested in participating in the home antigen testing agreement that's been put out by DESI, you can find that on our webpage, just hit at home antigen test links. If you click on, click on one of those links, they're available in English, Portuguese and Spanish. It will bring you to the site and the opt-in agreement. What it will allow you to do is get a free test every week to take and to determine whether or not your child may be, may be positive for coronavirus. And so we recommend anybody who has not looked into that program, but would like to participate, to check that out.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Any questions for the Assistant Superintendent? Okay, if not, we're gonna move on to finance and we'll get an update. And then there were still some questions, I think, from last meeting. Greg, I think you had some questions, correct? After the last meeting. So let's get an update and then we'll open it up to questions.
Hi Dean, it's Melanie. Unfortunately, I'm having some technical difficulties, so I can't see you and, yeah, can you hear me?
Hi Mel, are you there?
That's me, can you hear me? Hi guys, I'm trying to unmute myself, can you hear me? Hello?
Well, we can hear you on Zoom, hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't hear it all.
Well, let's test it again.
Hi Steve, can you hear me?
We can hear you on Zoom. If the members of the committee nod their heads, if they can hear Mel. Okay, Mel.
You can hear me?
Sounds like you're good, go ahead.
Okay, all right, we'll make the best of a, of a situation here. Sorry about that. I can see you all if that makes you feel any better. So don't make any funny faces at me. So there's not a whole lot to get you for an update on the finances. The reports, as you can see, don't look too much different from the last time you saw them. We still have plenty of money in our bottom line. We're still at about a $1.8 million in our general fund that we're gonna carry through till June. We do have some warrants that you'll be approving this evening. There are quite a few and unfortunately, you'll have to read through all of those. And I pre-apologize, we just didn't get to them at our last couple of meetings. So if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer them before you go ahead and, and read through and approve the dollar value. Other than that, our general fund salary line, we're still trying to continue to hire. We still have guidance counselors, we have the school psychologists, we're looking for building custodians. There's still plenty of availability on our website if, if anybody wants to go out and maybe take a look. It's leaving us with that little bit of cushion, as you can see in our salary line, to $700,000. If in fact, I think Dean mentioned it last time when we spoke, that if in fact, we don't get an opportunity to spend that on our salary line, then we would then try to reclassify that up into our general expense line. And then we would be able to cover the remaining balance in our health insurance and possibly cover more in the general fund and save our school choice when it comes to insurance and our tuition. So we're still kind of waiting and seeing on that one. We're gonna let that sit and stay as it is for a little while and continue to reevaluate that. Other than that, we are, we did, we could, we did hire a curriculum project coordinator position. So we're very happy to finally get that in place. We did up in, if you look at our expense line for the insurance, you'll notice, I don't know if you remember from last time, but our, our encumbrance was a little higher. We did go ahead and adjust that down because we were able to look at the first two quarter bills. And we had, the bills were less and they were a little higher, a little bit higher than we had budgeted. So we went ahead and reduced that line. So the negatives there is a little bit less than the last time, which is a great thing. So other than that, I don't have too much to say on, on the reports there for finance unless someone has a question specifically.
Greg, after, after the last meeting, there were, I don't think you wanted to make it last any longer than it did, so you still had some questions?
Go for it.
Yeah, I think, I think more, okay, there we go. I think most of my questions were more around the SER spending. So maybe, I don't know if Lorene's on. One of the questions, one of the questions I had was, how much money have we currently spent on learning loss or classroom support? Now that we're back, since we've returned to school? And how much do we plan to spend in that regard? And that was one of the questions that we had carried over from last meeting, those, hoping to get clarification on.
I think I, there's a section called requested information.
Yeah.
And that might be on there.
I reviewed that, it's really hard to follow. So maybe you could speak to it, if that's possible?
Certainly. Hi, everybody. Thank you for, for asking me. Mr. Thomas, I'll do my best, but it may mean that I need to just ask a few clarifying questions and, and come back at a, at the next meeting.
I mean, I think you're muted.
I can't hear you.
I am, you're right. I'm not muted.
Not anymore, you know?
Oh. So I what, I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Mr. Mayor?
I can hear you fine, go ahead.
The information that we did provide in the additional information, I did try to cluster some of the, some of the expenses and some of the salary positions that we have and provide you with information on which part of the COVID funding that we have used and that we would continue to use. And I didn't total everything up. I certainly can do that if it is a spreadsheet, Mr. Thomas, so I can total that up. If you would like me to do that, I don't have the specific amount of money. Maybe I could ask if you could, the, you'd said it was difficult to follow. So we had, we did chunk things out as far as enrichment slash learning loss. We tried to cluster the facilities and then the HVAC work. We tried to cluster the technology to give you a better idea of what, and Mel doesn't like me to use the non-technical term, the pockets of money that we are using.
Thank you. So the couple of things that, these number, the totals that I see here for like instructional enrichment and learning loss, or SER1, SER2, SER3, are those what we've already spent or what we plan to spend?
SER1 is either all spent or it includes some salary positions that the salaries are encumbered and they will go through the end of this year. So the funding for the COVID funds, the amount of money that came from the city, the 027 grant and then the SER1, those can all be considered to have been, to be in place. Or if they were for materials or technology and support, those have been purchased and are in place in the district. The SER2 and the SER3 are projected. And we do not, we have not used a lot of that, but we have had been approved for what we have budgeted. The couple of large expense items that have taken place so far in SER2 would be technology expenses.
Okay, so there's no diff, we don't, we can't, we're not differentiating between what's been spent and what has been spent, what we plan to spend in those.
I can, I can certainly differentiate that. I can't do it tonight.
No, that's okay.
But that's, this was my first go at trying to break things down a little bit differently when the mayor had asked about that. So if you would like me to come back at the next meeting, I'll make a note and, and I'll put down what has been expended or is in place and what is intended.
Sure, that would be great. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to take up my whole, the whole time. But the student support and SEL, right? There, we have a line item for that, that's separate from instructional enrichment and learning loss. So I was, when I see student support, it makes me think that's to support learning loss. But what, what is different about this, the student support slash SEL versus the instructional enrichment slash learning loss categories?
That's a good question. I probably should have added more annotation to my key. So when we consider our support, we are generally talking about the at-risk students. So our learning loss would be for all of our 6,000 or so students. And the support is generally for our special education, our L students and then other identified students of need. So they are our specific subgroups that are at risk. And then SEL would be for all of our students. There are some students who are in our specialized program that require additional social emotional support. And we did put those together, but I can certainly tease that out as well. So I can cluster just the SEL expenditures so far, separate from our student supports. And I, so I would generalize that they are special education and L students. If that makes it clear.
That helps. I think definitely broken down a little bit more is what I'm looking for, for sure. But it's great that we're, we're targeting that, you know, that group of students. Sorry. Sorry, let other people ask questions too.
No, we've left plenty of time, that's why the agendas are the way they are, so we we're not rushed through the process, so we do have time. I I think what would help, I I think much of the reason that we receive funding is to catch students up, because clearly they fell behind. And I think what the school committee is looking for is a a update, and this may be where the student achievement committee comes into to play is, how are we doing catching kids up? I mean, we're spending this money, so the plan is we're directing this money in particular areas. And the reason is, well, so we can help kids catch up from where maybe they fell behind. And how are we doing as we go along the process to, so that we understand that we're allocating the funds in the right direction, not to find out in, you know, in August that, well, we, you know, we put our best foot forward with, we just spent two million dollars and we don't see any results. And so I think what we're looking for is, you know, we're spending millions of dollars to catch kids up. And and how are we doing along the way and how is this all working? I think Greg, is that, that that sort of was our conversation.
Yeah.
Others that I had individually is um what our concerns were. So and how do we relate that in a way that we can communicate it to, you know, the the parents of six thousand students? You know, in in a way that we're not using acronyms and just explaining that, you know, we're putting this money in a particular direction and this is what our, this is what the results are. This is, this is how we're doing as we go along. Uh, or do we change strategy and when do we do that? I mean, we're more than halfway through the year now and still dealing with COVID. And um, so I think that would be helpful, is to get that reading on h- how we're doing with, where are we spending it? And and the other question might be even to the assistant superintendent is, you know, we have a lot of marquees in front of our, you know, it looks like the P T O spent a lot of money, raising money to build these P T Os. Maybe we want to put a message out there that we're looking for, you know, help. I- in what a better place at a target audience to capture those that either drive by the schools or leave their children off or pick them up. But just put a, you know, I think we've got to look for other ways to reach out uh in terms of hiring people. And the other piece of this for me would be, it would seem to me that tutors are an integral part of catching kids up. So if the teacher, you know, um, knows that a student is falling behind and needs that extra special help, what can you tell the committee tonight about, you know, what we're doing for that student? And do we have the resources to be able to provide that tutoring or extra help that that student needs? Because I would assume it's the one-on-one that's gonna help catch that student out.
Assistant Superintendent Riley, I could speak to part of that, I can't speak to the hiring piece, would you like me to try that?
Yes, please, Lorene.
Um, so um, Mayor Mazzarella, you are correct, we are halfway through our year. Uh, we do have uh report cards and progress reports that have gone home, that's one piece of data. We also have some um assessment data at each of our levels. Um, and I won't use all of the acronyms, I ready and that type of thing. But I've made a note and what we can do is provide the committee with a breakdown of where our students are and information that we're providing to teachers and then to families. Uh, I've made a note, we can do that at the next meeting if you would like.
In in terms of human resources and hiring folks, like I can say it, right now, our staffing is at an all-time high. And so we have put a, an emphasis on getting as many positions as we can, whether it be tutors, teachers, or paraprofessionals in our schools, and making sure, especially with the tutor assignments, and this is done primarily through the curriculum office with the cooperation of principals, to make sure they're in the right schools servicing the kids who need the most help. It is a challenge and continues to be a challenge to get qualified folks in some of these positions. We struggled primarily, I'll be honest with you, with getting A B A tutors to support our kids who may need uh behavioral interventions and support. Um, but we continue to look to identify people who can uh serve our kids and students as they present their needs. And so um we will continue to try to expand those efforts and um certainly um I would agree with you that that's where um hopefully the emphasis will continue to be, is is making it so kids can have more individual attention um than they would typically in a typical year. I think we're gonna be looking at providing services and then also support the kids for multiple years at this point. And when we look at the learning loss uh that's happened over the last year and a half, two years, it's it's pretty excessive, and as people spoke earlier tonight, it also transcends into the social emotional realm. And so we'll continue to have an emphasis of both on giving those kids more distinct, distinct targeted interventions uh in smaller groups than they would typically enjoy, and then also looking to bolster our guidance staff and other support professionals who can support the kids in their social emotional needs.
Okay, thank you, Eileen was first, then Ron.
Okay, I was just gonna say, um, Mayor, we typically um do get reports um from uh the administration around children's progress, and I know that has not been on our um agendas, but I think it is important, uh much to your point of assessing whether what we're doing is working, you know, are we moving the bar, where are students, are they uh making up that gap? So I do feel that that's important information for us to, um, you know, know as far as impact on budget, but also on the superintendent's evaluation. Um, so I would like to see, you know, some of that information coming to us so that we have that to digest and make sure we're sort of moving in the right direction, uh because we all acknowledge that this, um, certainly the pandemic has really caused a lot of backlash for children to lose, you know, some of their, um.
Oh, yeah.
So I want to make sure that we have needed to support that, uh, we're making progress.
And remember.
Understanding that there's more progress to be made.
As the assistant superintendent said, we have three years, this funding's been three years, it's multiple years. But at the end of those three years, I think the expectation from parents, taxpayers, school committee is, we're we're gonna have kids caught up. As as much as we possibly can, using those dollars, it's precious dollars that we never had available to us before. And um, so I I I think that's a good recommendation, is to have more conversation on the monthly, on on a, on a meeting by meeting basis as to exactly where we're at, how we're doing. If we need to pivot, then we need to pivot, that's all, I mean.
Absolutely, and I do, um, also I know they are trying to get more um school psychologists and social workers, clearly. Um, that's where I'd like to see um somebody go to supporting those social emotional needs of children who can learn. Um, and, you know, um, the pandemic has had on all families, um, and it's important for us to support those vulnerable, and our students, um, they can't learn unless they have solid foundation. Um, so I would like to be us really focusing on that, I think that's gonna help them ultimately, um, improve their academic.
Couldn't agree with you more. Mr. Ron, the floor is yours.
All right, I have a bias in this. And I have to admit, I have a bias. I am proud of this.
Excuse me, Mr. Ho, could you unmute yourself?
See, Ron, I had you back. Go ahead.
Still muted.
Well, when I do, you're gonna have reverberation.
Well, go ahead.
No, everybody else is muted.
Yeah. Okay, as I said, I have a bias in this, because I'm on part of the new committee on student achievement. And I believe we have to show what we already have, or what we've already, where the students have already gone to. Because it's all very well to say that they've lost this, this, but we need proof. We need proof to see where they haven't gone and where did they go before? So part of this is student achievement, I would like to be able to s- have something on paper saying where the kids have been, what are their projections? We had this conversation, e- we had this conversation almost every year. That, you know, I know grades, every grade is different. They go through, you know, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, and then all of a sudden the seniors graduate and there's a new group of sophomores that were freshmen before. So the learning ca- the learning capacity has changed or has gotten better. But we've never had, we've never had the bar saying, how are they achieving? What are the projections? Are the projections from the school? Or is it a projection from the students, I mean, from the teachers? What are the projections and in comparison to the other schools? In the, in in, in New England or in Central Mass? To me, that's what achievement is, what are they doing? What can they do, not what, what have they done? Where are they gonna, what can they possibly be doing? Race, color, creed, age, give me the numbers. We are evidence-based, we keep talking about being evidence-based, I want evidence from student achievement, and there's no one to blame.
Ron, I think that's what Eileen was just, we're all agreeing, we're agreeing with you, Ron.
You talk about the monies, but the thing is, we have to prove that we are u- that we are gonna be using that money right.
Yes, we agree with you.
That's the problem.
We agree.
We all agree.
And we can't just, we can't just be talking theory. I love talking, I could talk theory all day long, but we have to have our feet on the floor too.
Yeah, no, I think that's what we just asked for.
Right, and and at the, be- before the end of the meeting, we'll, we'll turn this into a, a, not a vote, but a um basically a um, not a vote as a vote, but a, what's the word there, I'm thinking? It's a, it's a, it's a resolution, it's a resolution, a communication saying, hey, we agree on this, and this is uh our focus, this is really how we want to kind of hone in on this. And um, it, and I just had a question, have, in the police department, we use retirees to help us with um with details and that. In the fire department, we use a lot of the retirees for training. The retirees have so much experience, they've been through sometimes two and three generations. So when you get up there for a student, it's like, yeah, I had her in my seventh grade and my mother had generations. Have we tried to tap the retired teachers in terms of helping us and tutors? And I haven't heard of that, and I'm not gonna assume that we haven't, but can somebody speak to that at all and how we've done and if we've been successful at all?
In terms of uh retired teachers, we we definitely have, mostly as an access in terms of people being substitutes. Um, you know, and anybody who's been involved with us in the past and wants to be re-involved in the district, we certainly open our doors wide. Uh, we've at the, we're at the point where we've pretty much, we've worked through all of our lists in terms of offering people who have been associated with the district in the past and whether or not they want to work with us in a new capacity or support our classrooms as a substitute. So that is something that we continue to look out to do.
The um, the uh, the other piece of this I think we can work on as a committee is, w- we need to engage parents. We need to let the parents and emphasize and overemphasize how important parental invol- involvement is. Because there are a couple of, you know, there there's a pie and there are a couple of pieces to the pie for a student to be successful. And one of that, one of those pieces is obviously, you know, parental involvement and and their child's education. And that's, that's, that's key, that's critical. And if we don't have that, schools, teachers can't make up for all of that. They do make up for quite a bit of that, but not all of it. And I think, I don't know how, I mean, almost everybody here that I can see has a role, no, everybody here has a direct role in public education. You have kids, grandkids, nephews, nieces, you work, a parent, somebody, everybody here. So how do we use our, how do we use our committee to engage parents? You know, do we invite them in when the numbers go down? Do we have smaller sessions where we invite people to come in? And we have translators and, you know, do we in invite churches to bring their parishioners to one of our meetings? So that, you know, oh, do we go there? I mean, we've been to the different schools in the past, nothing prevents us from going to other venues where people are more comfortable and engage. Maybe there's a language barrier and they can't really help. I'm sure Eileen, you've run into this a million times, where there's a language barrier and the parents want to be helpful, but maybe they can't. But maybe in their setting, they're more apt to say, hey, you know, I need some help. And 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 maybe there are people in those venues who would say, I'd be glad to help you, I'd be glad to work part-time or or I can, or help tutor, or whatever it might be. So, you know, I think we're on the same page, if anybody wants to know in terms of where we are in those. Melissa, are we kind of speaking the same language? Go ahead.
Just thinking as I have a three, third grader home, I do math all day, but like a parent night on Common Core math would be great. Like, and I mean honestly, like just, what our kids are learning now is being taught in a completely different way
Right.
than many of us learned it. Um, whether we agree with it or not, what tier? And I think just being able to engage parents, and if that's something that could easily be done over Zoom, you know, it could be done in person. But trying to think outside the box things like that might be a good option.
Well, we have a good education channel, not everybody gets, you know, not everybody gets the cable channels, but they do stream. So it might be an opportunity to engage one of our professional teachers who have the ability to communicate both to the student and to, I hate to say it, Ron, dumb it down, so that we as adults can understand what it is that you're trying to teach your students because we're in, we are in a different world. For us though. Yeah, absolutely. So maybe it's more. Maybe it's more of a, how do we as parents or grandparents or whatever, help these students? Uh, what can we do to help, right? We do it every time there's a storm, we tell people, this is what you can do, clean the catch base and, you know, cl- clean out the, you know, the hydrant for the m- letter carriers and, you know, drive slow, you know, we tell everybody that every storm, but do we really go above and beyond to communicate, this is how you can help? Or do we do it, do we just reemphasize it and step up our sort of uh outreach to? The, here are some of the things that you could do to help out. So we'll, we'll keep that as an agenda item, because a lot of good ideas here tonight. Any other questions at all? Greg, you those, pretty much answered those questions that you had? So I think what Eileen said, what Eileen said is that we'll, we we can, you described it best, but, no, I mean, it's now around town, you and Ron described it best in terms of boiling this down to the point where understandably we can be communicated to as as partners, as to how, where are we going and how are we doing as we're moving in that direction? And how can we help? What are the things that we can do to help? And if we have to pivot, then we gotta pivot, but we've only got a few months left and they go by quick. Greg, Greg, did you have another question?
Yeah, I just one, uh, so there was some, um, I've heard a little feedback, I I went and did a site visit at Samus Ed in Fallbrook, which was amazing. Um, just, just some things I wanted to check, maybe Jim, as far as um, Dean, he mute. Um, have we, have we set aside any money for the teachers in the classroom? It just, I've heard, you know, teachers have classroom libraries that may be out of date, um, things that would be great for one-time S R funds to be spent on. Uh, have we reached out to see if that's an opportunity to to provide teachers with some money to update their classrooms?
And so I, what I do know, and Lorene could speak to this as well, is that part of the S R funds, we reached out and had multiple surveys with both teachers and then also our parents and families. And so we have received some feedback from teachers as far as what they would be uh hoping for and looking for when we first did that survey last time. As far as specific plans in terms of classroom libraries, I'm not aware of anyone right now, but I would say that I think it is important that we're in continual commu- communication with the teachers and actually what's happening inside their classroom, so if that's a need, I think we need to continue to look and expose that.
Um, half a year, there was um, a, like, that the teachers could fill out for sort of like a, I want to say it's not really a grant, because it was something from the school department um around some of those kinds of items. And I also know in the past, um, P T Os were able to provide um some of those items um to teachers as well um for those P T Os that had raised considerable, you know, funds, so those might be to revisit.
So I think Jim, what?
If I may?
Would be helpful is, I, I think I brought up last meeting that there was a article in the champion. That we were gonna solicit. I guess staff and, and parents in terms of how they thought funds should be used. I don't think we saw anything back on that, but. But maybe we can communicate to the teachers in the classroom and the principals as a school committee. That we're trying real hard, staff's trying real hard to hire people. But in the absence of hiring people, are there things, are there things and materials that we can help you with? And maybe we can get a list of those things to consider. Because I think Jim, what you communicated is you're pulling out all the stops and the whole team is. But they're just, there are more people looking to hire than there are people. In terms of the whole education system, they just aren't out there. So maybe that's the, maybe that's what we communicate, uh, through the superintendent and assistant superintendent is. Are there things that we can use those, that funding for more immediately like, you know, if there's a library that's depleted and a teacher wants to be able to hand a book to a kid. He sees that, you know. Students really interested in a particular area, that we can hand that student that book or give them some of the other resources. I, I think we're good on Chromebooks. Is it safe to say that we're good on Chromebooks? So now it's, you know, that was the big push twelve months ago. It's a different story today. So I'd certainly like to know what. You know, it goes on in the classroom and what, what their opinion is. On how we, we might be able to help them. And I think Greg just made a couple of observations that he saw firsthand. So I don't know if that's fair or not for us to ask, but, um, is that possible? Just so we got a. Some feedback.
Yeah, I'd say anything's possible. And so certainly if that's, if that's the way the committee and they feel like we need to do more direct outreach to. Teachers, that's something we can definitely do.
Also, the SS three stakeholder survey results were in your packet.
And is that a result of the article that was in the paper in October?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the, um, the teachers' feedback as well?
Yes. Yes, this was teachers, students, school and district administration, other school staff, city government.
Okay.
Um, not that, um, parents should feel like they need to.
Well, maybe we, their wish list, and you're right, maybe we need a wish list from every, from every school. Classroom and there are things that we can fund and look at the banners, how fast they sold up at high school. We went from purchasing them ourselves. To people calling me saying, how do I get a banner? I'm like, I don't know, put up a poll and we'll get you a banner. I mean, it's gone to that. So. Maybe that's, that's the opportunity if somebody wants to do that. So if we can get a wish list, we communicate that wish list, then, um. If we start there and then we can't, maybe we'll kind of team up to use some of that, you know, some of those other funds. But I would like to see, of course, if you can narrow that down to, from. Teachers, staff, principals to us, if you could do that easily and give us a breakdown of the things that they needed.
Okay, yeah.
Kind of narrowed that.
Yeah. And also, um, every year the Lemmister Education Foundation has given out, um. Somewhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars. Any teacher can write a grant. And submit it and they have funded those. I've seen, uh, many of the projects that we've done. I know there was one on trout. I know they did a hometown heroes book, I think, uh, one year. So there's, uh. We've had some applications.
But we have millions of dollars to spend. So, I mean, this is to help kids get job now. Every day that goes by is another day they fall behind. So I think the administration's done a good job. We, we'd like to play more of a part in it, but we don't know how we can help. We don't know what the data shows and where, where, where it is that they need help. So I don't know whether. Um, you know, I did set aside, asked the superintendent, she's already immediately set up times when we can have meetings with, with. Different schools. If we start early, we don't have to rush them through. And it felt like in the past years, by the time we get them all, it's two and three schools in one night. And they gotta kind of like, okay, you got, this way each of them could come in and kind of communicate what's going on in their school, what's working, what's not, where they need help. And that way, you know, there's plenty of time for each of the schools coming without putting two and three on the agenda at that time. So. Yeah, I, I think we wanna be helpful. We wanna know where we can help. Um, maybe it's matching those fifteen hundred dollar grants, able to use our money and match them. To put out those to different schools, but I think. We need to start somewhere and if there are things that we can do more immediately. Because we can't get, you know, staff, then let's work on. Melissa was first and then Ron. Oh?
So. I think maybe. This survey was done late summer, September. If it's possible, maybe teachers now that they've been back in the building for a month.
Good idea.
But I think the teachers want and what we need is that first report. And while I wanna see our schools looking great in their books. What we needed is people in the building. So if the teacher needs a break and he can step out of the classroom, there's someone there to cover them. So I wanna be able to have all these things, but I must be mindful that. Maybe we need to invest that money in hiring, or sign on with something. We need to look at the staff and the pay. And any opportunity you can get to add to the class in the savings, I, you know, maybe even reaching out for volunteers if you can afford them. Just, um, probably, I don't know, I think just trying to get people in the building to help.
All right. Oh, good point. Oh. Okay, Mr. Ron, did you have something to add?
Yeah, well, she took some of the words out of my mouth. I was worried, I was trying, I was writing on my hand, cause. To paraphrase her states, her, her statements, long, long time ago.
That would be committee member, Eileen.
It would be the question about equity, 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 equity. We need to have equity in all the schools. And on top of that. I fear that if we depend upon. The P T Os for monies, I'm afraid of P T O P T. We have to be careful. Yes, Dean, you're right. We have monies coming for us. We have money we can use. We have to spend it wisely. We have to spend it equitably on all the schools. Yes, they have needs, they have wants. Is it up to us to figure out what, what is, what is greater, the need versus the wants? Who can tell us what is the difference between needs and wants? We all want something, but what do we need the most? That's the problem. It's a big problem. But the biggest thing is equity, 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 equity. I can't over emphasize it. I mean, one brought up two, three or four years ago. About the issue about equity. Do we have equity in all our, all our schools? So, uh, Greg was talking about the library. Are all the libraries up to level? I don't know. I have to clear the elements on that. The London Public Library has a huge thing where they can rent books from. Can the school district use that? I don't know. Somebody can tell me. But the biggest problem, my fear is equity. And P T O P T. We have to be careful.
Once all they can run, and I think, um, so kind of paraphrase, and if I'm moving in the wrong direction, maybe we could get, um. An update from the superintendent at our next meeting, which we'll talk about because it is school vacation. I'm not sure. We can talk about it later. As a new world business, whether we meet or meet. Friday before, it doesn't always have to meet on the Monday, you know, on a Monday, we can meet on another day. And try to get an update is the, I think Melissa said the survey was done early on in September, things have changed. Let's get an update from the principals, I guess, right? The principals would go back and communicate with staff. And, and, and I'm just saying, they would be the, they would be the person to communicate as a superintendent as to what the teachers' needs are in the schools. Right, right, right. Okay, that's fine. However, I, I do believe that's a superintendent, how she does that. But our, our call or task is just, just ask for an update on where, you know, the needs are, and then we can evaluate them. On that. And as Ron said, to make sure, our job is to make sure that it's, it's equitable. And I think school committee over. Last, you know, twenty something years has done a good job to, to always take into consideration. Equity in all of our schools. We might not be perfect, but we do a heck of a decent job of that and always mindful of, you know, between schools and we could always do better. Okay, good. Very, very good conversation. That's, and so I, I, I think from that comes some good ideas. I do think we need to look at, how do we, you know, everybody's hiring, how do we, you know, I hear Amazon, they're, now their ads are, hey, if you can give us an hour, we'll take it. You know, if you can do, we'll do mothers' hours, dads' hours. If you can work from two o'clock in the morning till four, we'll take you. Because they know they have to move this machine and there aren't people to do it anymore. You can work in the warehouse, you can drive, you could be an accountant. They pretty much opened it up to say, if you can breathe and you can move and you're looking for a few hours to keep busy, come on in. I think that's the message from us is. You know, we're going through this period where we could use some help and they're out, we have so much talent in this community. These parents are amazing, the talent that they have. And, and maybe we just really put out the plea. You know, to, as you said, just a break sometimes, somebody isn't feeling good and needs to step out, get a, you know, get a break for a minute or get some papers cut, you know, copied. I understand we have working families and, you know, most, you know, single parents and all that, but I bet you that there are plenty of people out there that would be happy to come in. If we, sometimes you just gotta ask and you gotta do it in a public way, right? And that's why I say maybe our marquise out front talk about instead of, you got Tuesday off, we put something up there like. You know, we could use a few good women and men for a few good hours, right? All right. Thank you, everybody. That was good. All right, we're gonna move on now if it's okay. Now, and Mr. Riley, thank you and Laureen, thank you very much. And Melanie as well. We'll move now to, let's see where we are now. We're gonna go to the budget calendar, individual school presentations. In your packet, superintendent prepared this for you. So this is sort of a rough idea as to how we might invite. Schools and I'd really like to give them time this year to come in and take, you know. Whatever time they, they, they think they could use to give us a, you know, bird's eye view as to what's going on in the school, how they've. How they've done, um, where some of the needs are. And I think this is really in, also in preparation, not only get a snapshot, but also preparation of the budget. I think if you look at the, the numbers coming from the state and the net school spending numbers, when you put them together. That's like the most amount, unless I keep thinking to myself, I just hope this isn't a mistake. I just hope, this is, you know, few years, we got almost nothing. And this year, it's, 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 it's exciting to see because we're actually gonna be able to, as a school committee. Do some good with, you know, those new funds that are coming in. So the, I think the, starting the process early and engaging the various schools. And their staffs as to what's going on in the school, give us a better idea as to how we spend, um, this funding. So this, everybody have a chance to look at that?
Uh, Dean, it's Melanie. If you, if I have a second, if you don't mind. I don't know if Dean can hear me.
Anything, um, any comments at all?
I'll just say, go ahead, Melanie.
Okay.
Um, no, I just wanna comment, uh.
So we'll try to get, as we develop a budget, we'll try to get each school in.
I don't know if you can hear me, Dean. Can you hear me? Okay. No?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay. Well, we've got a few out there. Greg, I'm just talking to you.
That's cool. And a few other people.
No, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Great. Okay. So I just wanna follow up Dean with what Dean was saying is that our chapter seventy, we have preliminary numbers. Uh, from the commissioner and they are looking great. Um, we are up. Um, about nine point seven million dollars from last, uh, fiscal year. And, um, that is, that is above and beyond any jump we've ever seen. It's, um. We're, we're looking at just a, in, in, in chapter seventy eight, we're increasing by sixteen point five three percent. Um, which is equating to about eight point one million dollars. The remainder of that is coming from the, um, requirement by the municipality, which is another four point nine six percent. Which is one point five million dollars. So that money is definitely going to do some good in the district. Um, but it does, it does equate to the formula being, uh, corrected over the years. And they are starting to correct, uh, the definition of low income and how that is being counted. On a federal poverty level, right? Um, they did go back to. The low income definition that was used prior to fiscal seventeen, where they're basing it on a hundred and eighty-five percent of the federal poverty level. Instead of, um, the disadvantaged designation, which they had at a hundred and thirty-three percent of the federal poverty, uh, poverty level. So. That's what made this big difference, um, and in the jump that we've seen for Lemmister, um, and that is a big deal. So. But on the other, on another note, I am, uh, it's that time of year that, um, in all honesty, I really do enjoy because. My job, instead of being in an office or in meetings, um, I get to go to the schools. And I get to meet with the principals and I get to hear their needs and I get to hear their wants. And we talk through their budgets, um, on a, on a need basis when it comes to their personal schools. So, um, that is happening right now. I have meetings, you know, for the next two weeks with all the principals. Um, so I can of course come back with the principals and give you all an update. On, you know, what it is that they are looking for because they do communicate that to us in, in the administration level. Um, it's just that, you know, they're busy and we, we only get to hear it once in a while. So I just wanted to kind of give you that update that we are.
Okay, thank you. So how do we do this? Do we invite? A school or two into the next meetings? How would you like to do that? So we give them sufficient time without rushing it through, they can. Two, okay. And the high school and the C T E I is one? And what about Center for Excellence? So three of them in one night? Okay. I personally don't have a problem with you have to have another meeting in between, but that's totally up to everyone else here. To, to give them the sufficient time. This is really important time. We're gonna have, you heard the amount of money we're gonna have to spend. And it's really important that, I mean, I, I wanna understand it. I wanted to, wanna understand. I don't wanna, I have to like be here in, into April and May and it's like. We gotta vote on this because it's gotta take, go to the next step and then it's gotta go to the council. I think that's our biggest responsibility is the budget. Because the budget is our way of communicating to the parents, schools, businesses, everyone else, taxpayers. This is what's important to us and we have a good handle on what's going on in our school. Obviously we can't. Even with all that new money, we can't fill everyone's, but at least we'll, we'll be in sync with what each school need. I mean, you know, my personal feeling is give a budget to each school, let them run, let them hire, let them hire, you know, that's my feeling. So. Absent that, I wanna a good understanding from the people from each school. What's going on, how they're doing and how we can help. How can we use this extra money to help them all in the schools? And how do we make it so it's a two for one? It's one dollar spent like two. And then we have these other funds. The other ARBA funds that are spent, how can we sort of put all that together strategically? To help kids get to where they, where we know they ought to be and where, where we want them to be, where everybody wants them to be and. At the same time play catch up, because that's what we're doing.
The two middle schools at the same time, you have the high school.
Yeah.
All the programs at the high school at the same time. And you certainly could, uh, do all the elementary schools at the same time. Or do one elementary school and the kindergarten. And then the other two, but I imagine the elementary.
So Jim, can you help us organize that?
I think traditionally, we, we have done an elementary night, um, middle schools together and then. Um, but it's to your preference how in depth you would want them to be. Um, you know, you may want to, to. Um, but it's to your preference how in depth you would want them to be. Um, you know, you may want to, to to Eileen's point. Um, have two elementaries and uh early childhood present and then two on another night, do the middle schools together.
I think it's why, I think it's why the two elementary with the kid, with the preschool and kindergarten, because one feeds into the other. So you can almost kind of show by graph. Here they are, here here they're coming up and coming up. You can see it almost like, can anyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
You'll reverberate.
I'm just asking, I'm I'm just asking, I'm very simple minded. I know I'm a simple minded. I'm just looking, I'm looking for a graph. A simple graph. I'm a graph person. I like to see it going from here to there. It it's.
As long as they have enough time. That's probably all that'll be on agenda in the finance, unless there's things that superintendent needs to hold on. Yeah, let's, I mean, if that's okay with everybody, like take an extra night in there, but it it would really be worth. And again. I think the, what we want to communicate is we want to be partners with the schools. Are we have a responsibility on the budget and prioritize the budget to make sure it goes in the places that we want. But we need, we're not, you know, Greg went and visited a couple of the schools. We're not in the classrooms every day. We have to rely on on on. Feedback and we, so we want to make sure that we give, as long as every school has enough time. In the past, I I thought we used to skip it, but I'm here, I'm fine.
So we can start that day.
Yes, perfect. All right, so we have an extra week, perfect.
That's when the first presentation.
Well, it's also school vacation, so people might not be around, right? I don't know. Up to you. We still have some time to think about, so what we put on.
Well, I think the discussions can't, if you look at the calendar, can't take place until after the department budgets. Come in and they come in February twenty eighth. So, um.
We can.
Could we get like a projected calendar at the next meeting and then we can decide?
Yes, if we plug them in, then we should be all set.
But I I don't think it's also gonna hurt us to meet with them before the budgets are in. I think that's what we're hoping is that we can hear them. So that we can go through the budget and and make sure that our, you know, that our. Priorities are their priorities, right? That's what I think the committee wants to do is to make sure that we're putting the money in the right pockets where it's best spent. And it's gonna have the greatest effect, law student achievement for every kid. Because of what school they they go. Every kid starts off the same day at school, but they don't all finish the same way. We're trying to do as much as we possibly can. To make sure every kid, you know, finishes as close to as the where they ought to be as possible, right?
They're gonna just caution people that. Pencils and they might need sixty-two pencils and it really should be, you know.
Hundred percent.
And to, uh, you know.
But I don't think we have to wait for them to turn in their budgets to have them come to present to the to the school committee. I think they already know what their priorities are. It's just a matter of, you know, putting the dollars in. This is more of a general overlook of snapshot. Here's how we're doing, here's what's going well. Very relaxed atmosphere, I hope, that just isn't pivoting them against hitting them against us or anyone. Just to say, hey, here's where we're at, here's what we're doing and here's where we can use, if we were to get more money, this these are the places that would be most helpful. Whether it be money from the ABRA funds or from the, you know, the additional dollars that we have.
But you know, there's one small quibble here. When you're saying, when you, when you said, when you said. Where the child should be or where you want the child to be, you have to be careful because. The child you're doing, he or she could be doing, using all his fa- his or her faculties. But the child cannot, can't, won't, will not. Go and achieve what you want them to do.
Understood.
Simple because, one, you have the establishment and the kid not the establishment. And you know, the old story was. Don't trust anybody over thirty.
Well, we do our part. I mean, we're gonna do our best.
Am I right about that?
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent agreement. And and along the way, students need help and that's what we're trying to do is give them the help that they need. Along the way so that finishes many students as we can, get them to the finish line. At at at, you know, each teacher has that lesson plan by day, by week, by month, you know, exactly where each student needs to to finish. At what level, above all, and and if they're not moving in in that direction, then we need to help them, right? Provide the resources to help them. Okay. Thank you, everybody. That was good, good conversation. I appreciate it and I think we've made some progress and at least I feel more focused on. Particularly areas, so I thank you for that. So now we'll move on to a student testing program. And that was asked for, how is that in place testing gonna work? Um, also, we have test at City Hall now. Um, so if people want to do in-home testing and also the testing at the airport, which is a, a. You know, combination of London and Pittsburgh working together and every day, um, except for Friday, Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday. From news to four and today, there are only maybe twenty people in line for the whole day. So if people want to be tested between the home test kits and testing at the airport, there should be no reason that people aren't tested. We have. Also vaccine sites set up, we'll list those and then I believe at the school, at Fallbrook School on Saturdays, they're gonna continue to have that. Uh, that vaccine site. Uh, so with that, um, Kathy, are you there to speak to the? In-place testing?
I'm here.
There you are.
So, uh, yeah, so first I just wanna, um. Just mention that, yes, we have the vaccine clinics at Fallbrook. This Saturday, we also have one for all ages on Thursday at the Elks. And we will have the links to those. I will send them out to everybody and they will be on the website. Not yet, but they will be. Um, I also just wanna mention to everybody that so far for the antigen at home testing, which. You mentioned, we have seven hundred staff people signed up and two thousand students signed up. So, um, I'm very excited about that and people can still sign up. The link is on the district website. Um, please, you know, you, the uh kids get a kit. Every other week and each kit has two tests in it and we're asking them to test once a week. Preferably on Sunday, but any day of the week works as long as you do it once a week. Um. So. Desi keeps making changes. Um, they they changed everything the week of Christmas vacation where they went from. Ten days of isolation to five days and the test and stay went from seven days to five days. And people had to continue to wear masks for the additional five days. Then only about two or three weeks later, they changed it again. And now the current guidelines, I have sent everything to you and I did the highlighted version. So actually it didn't come from me, it came from Chris Silverman. So the highlighted version with all the changes. So we had the opportunity to opt in to Desi's test at. Home where everybody got the kits who opted in to get the kits. Um, by agreeing to do that, we did not have to do test and stay anymore. So we're still doing symptomatic testing. Um, we are, and then everyone is testing weekly that wants to test weekly, but we are no longer. Doing test and stay. So what does that mean? First of all, it means that the Department of Public Health and Desi, they decided to shift their focus because there was a lot of time and energy. Going into contact tracing and it 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 just, it it wasn't really. Working well and they they decided to focus more on those that are symptomatic and those that are positive. In isolating those individuals. They felt that it would be better, um, um. Effort, you know, it 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 just made more sense um in regards to time and effort. So, uh, and in reducing the spread of COVID nineteen. So I I sent you the the worksheet that the symptoms are the same. But they know they took out the bolded symptoms because they're not differentiating between symptoms between those who are vaccinated. And unvaccinated anymore. Um, and instead they're saying, you know, if it's mild symptoms and they're symptomatic. And they're test negative because we're still doing symptomatic testing, they can go home, they can go back to class. And if it's really severe symptoms, even if they test negative, they need to go home. So, so they got rid of the bold. The other thing that they did was, I'm gonna go through the different protocols. Protocol A is for the individual who tests positive. So the person who tests positive, they have to stay home and isolate for a minimum of five days. From symptom onset or from testing, it's whichever came first. They can come to to school on day six, providing that they're symptom uh free, no fever. For at least twenty-four hours. And and when I say symptom free, there there's a few things that that. You may still have such as fatigue, um, you might have a little bit of a cough, but everything should be greatly improved. And you must be able to wear that mask for the additional five days. Um, you do not need to have a test to come back to school. Um, protocol B is for your asymptomatic close contacts and there are no close contacts in school. However, and there's always a however, there can be close contacts at home. So if you have a sibling, a parent, somebody who is sick at home. Um, if you are not vaccinated, you will have to quarantine at home. Throughout their isolation plus the five, which it should be five days, but it could be longer. Plus your five days of quarantine. You cannot do test and stay for people who. Are close contacts at home. If you're vaccinated, fully vaccinated. You can come to school as long as you stay asymptomatic. Now, Desi has been very, very. Um, kind in that to them, fully vaccinated is just. The two vaccines, not the booster vaccine or the one J and J and not a booster. So, um. Uh, let's see, so that's a really important thing. So, um, and and the reason why. There's no close contacts in school is because we have removed the person who is sick there at home. And people are testing whoever has signed up once a week. So if you're testing once a week, no matter what. Then you're gonna have a heads up that you're sick, probably before you even know that you're sick. And if you're symptomatic during the week and you wanna test again, by all means, you can, you can test. And uh that way you're getting out of the school population before you really infect. Um, a lot of other people. So as opposed to home where you just can't escape your family. Um. Let's see, those people who cannot mask up, they have to stay out for the full ten days. Um, if they are the close contact um at home or if they're they're symptomatic and they test positive. They they can't come back on day six because they can't wear a mask. And that might be your behavioral, um, it could be your really young kids. It could be uh people that have uh other chronic conditions or high anxiety and for whatever reason, they cannot wear that mask. Um. Those are really the um, the major things. Um, do you have any questions for me?
I think Melissa does first. Melissa, go ahead.
So Kathy, now, does the district or public health have a sense on a day-to-day of who in the community is positive?
Yes, so, so. Every morning I check Maven to see who is positive from clinic, doctor's appointments. Whoever has done the PCRs and reported it to the state. So then I figure out what school they're in and and. We make sure that they are isolated and um, so we're still doing that. On top of which, those that are symptomatic that are being tested in school with the binax now. Um, we know who's positive. Uh, not only do the school nurses in each school know, but I get the report for every positive that comes up. So those are on a spreadsheet that we keep, so we make sure that they're out for their designated time and that the families know what's going on. On top of which, with the new at-home testing, there is a um Google form that if. Um, parents test at home, their children at home and they come up positive or if staff come up positive. They do the Google form that says, um, I tested positive and which school they're in. And then we put them on the appropriate spreadsheet. So we can follow up with them.
So it's much more um self-testing, self-recording and we're incredibly dependent on families. Making sure that they're being responsible in sending the kids because really they could send their kids on day five. Back to school and we, and hopefully they're not, um.
So, so contagious though, right, but they may, they may be or.
You might not know until five days. Look, I mean, like I said today at like two or three o'clock, we only had sixteen people and we're a mass back site, which means. People can come in from anywhere and get tested. So if only sixteen and out of that, it's just a one percent. Or two percent of that sixteen people that were tested, that's a small base to 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 use as a.
Right.
You're right, we're gonna have to rely on the fact that people is gonna honestly, I mean, that's where it's coming, right?
Right.
If they're gonna test them all, they're gonna have to be honest about the results.
Right.
They might not thought, I'm gonna send it in. Don't send these kids to school. That's the most important.
And and that's always been an issue because there's times when I put kids on the spreadsheet that are positive. And so we're not expecting them in school and then I get the frantic phone call, oh my God, they're in class, what do I do? Send them home. So, um, that has always been in, you know, an issue, not a lot. Just a few people here and there. Um, and you're right, there is a lot of collaboration. Um, we do expect people to do the right thing. Um, we have the directions as to how to do the test because. I don't know, every single COVID test I've ever, I've seen, they they're all different. And the ones that we have now, um, when you're you're doing it, the five seconds in each nostril. And then you put in the solution for fifteen swirls and you squeeze it and then you're putting the drops in. It's a little bit different than the binax. So there are directions, there's videos um that we have linked to the notification. And we do expect people to, um, really follow the directions and do it correctly. But we can do symptomatic testing in school. So if the kid is in school and they and they have symptoms and parents have already signed them up for the test and stay or and symptomatic. We can test them there as well.
So we move, I think, Melissa, the answer is, I think you were kind of implying and moving in that direction is we've moved to an honor system. Pretty much today, I think substantiates the fact that we're now on a system and um and. And um, and, and there are plenty, I've seen enough videos on YouTube to instruct people if they can't, you know, in different languages in their head that they have a difficult time because Ikea also provides instructions. That's not a very happy experience. So the lesson that people need to, also, if people use masks, I can't overemphasize there are debates about whether they work or not, and I know one thing, having the same mask on for a week or two is not, definitely not working. We have thousands of masks, so if anybody needs masks, let us know, whether it's for work, whether it's for, whatever the situation is. We have plenty of masks to circulate and I can't overemphasize enough, change those masks, they're only good for a day and then they're pretty much obsolete at that point. And, and also thank you to, I know that there are students, you know, a teacher walks in the classroom, they never know who's gonna be in and out. And the feedback that I've, I've received um, from parents have been that the teachers have gone way above and beyond when a student is gonna be out for a number of days to put things together and packages for them, some of them even bring them to the house for them. And um, and, and, and they should, they should understand that we know that, I'm sure they don't do it because they, they want us to know, they do it because it's the right thing and they do it out of the kindness of the hearts, but we appreciate it. That they've gone above and beyond so that these students wouldn't slip back any further. So I've heard all kinds of stories and they're all good stories and, and uh, thank you to, to all of them. That makes a difference.
And can I also add that we need eighty-three percent vaccination uh, rate to be, have herd immunity. Desi wants us to have at least eighty percent vaccinated in order to apply for the waiver to get rid of masks. Right now, the high school or students is fifty-six percent fully vaccinated. And they're the highest of all the schools and um, you know, we just need to keep working on getting everyone vaccinated.
Okay, thank you Kathy.
Thank you.
Well, um, now move on uh, to the next piece of this, which is the mask policy, which is just an update. We're gonna review it and that's gonna be referred to the subcommittee and then the subcommittee report back its findings, okay? And let's see, we need approval of the minutes, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Whenever it's convenient for the policy subcommittee to.
But we can't chat outside this meeting to organize it, will we?
Sure. Right, as long as you post the meeting and all that, then you can have a conversation amongst yourselves. If there's some person that wants to be the chair or the co-chair or you all wanna be chairs. Uh, leave it up to you.
The next policy subcommittee. February twenty-second is the next policy subcommittee meeting.
That's typically when we have it.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, is it, is it possible to schedule a separate meeting so that we can have any changes we wanna make available for the, the full committee on the twenty-second? I'm just worried that if we meet on the subcommittee on the twenty-second, we're not gonna have anything ready for that meeting.
You don't have to have it ready if you don't want. But if you do, then yes, you better meet it and you better meet in the, at an hour.
Okay, so we'll talk and.
Yep. Now you got homework.
Always.
All right, we have minutes and um, from our meeting January eighteenth, has everybody had a chance to look through them? Did you spell your name correctly?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Josh, what happened? Did you hear something?
My, my name's spelled incorrectly.
We'll give you a free lift pass to the Mount Marthuse. That will help remedy the problem. Any corrections, Melissa?
Is Greg R's name spelled correctly? That R E M, or is it?
It's not wrong.
All right.
And then for some reason, I thought under the motion for the DC trip, I didn't think it was gonna happen.
For the DC trip? Did somebody have a vote against the DC trip? Okay. Anything else? If not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
By Brandon, Eileen's second, all in favor, signify the usual manner. Those opposed, all right.
Is Greg in the meeting?
Greg is um, out of state at a wake and a funeral for the next couple of days.
He's not.
Correct. Correct. And he did try to arrange it so he could be, but it's in the middle of the wake here, so I didn't expect them to be sitting there trying to communicate.
No, that's fine.
I, I, I. All right, so uh, we'll go now to finance items, there are a number of um, warrants and we can start whenever you're ready.
Who's in the finance branch and do you wanna go ahead and read the warrants?
All right, uh, so we've got warrant twenty, uh, this is from uh, general fund. Warrant twenty totaling one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars, forty-five cents. Warrant twenty-one totaling two million sixty, six hundred and fifty-five thousand and fifty-five dollars, twenty-two cents. Warrant twenty-two totaling five hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Warrant twenty-three totaling two million three hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and six cents. Warrant twenty-four totaling three hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and four cents. Warrant twenty-five totaling two million eighty-sixty-five thousand, two hundred and three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Warrant twenty-six totaling five hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents. Warrant twenty-seven totaling two million three hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Warrant twenty-eight totaling sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Warrant twenty-nine totaling two million four hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Warrant thirty totaling three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-six cents. And warrant thirty-one totaling six million, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Okay.
Do them together or separate?
I don't know, but you just spent a whole lot of money in less than two minutes.
Do them together?
Sure.
Okay, from grants revolving, warrant number twenty totaling eighty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents. Warrant twenty-one totaling six hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and nineteen cents. Warrant twenty-three totaling two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Warrant twenty-four totaling one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents. Warrant twenty-five totaling two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, uh, two hundred and thirty-seven, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Warrant twenty-six totaling five hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Warrant twenty-seven totaling two hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh, sorry, seven hundred and ten dollars and five cents. Warrant twenty-eight totaling nineteen thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Warrant twenty-nine totaling two hundred and fourteen thousand, thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-four cents. Warrant thirty totaling seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. Warrant thirty-one totaling two hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
Deep breath. Okay, does anybody have any questions? And that's the second by Eileen, any questions at all from anyone? Okay, thank you for both for doing that, all in favor, signify the usual manner, those opposed, okay, thank you. I'm gonna just shift now to uh, personnel update, uh, and then we'll go back to uh, action items in new world business. Is there any personnel update? Okay, so we'll do that later. Anything under action items that we need to vote on? And anything on the newer old business?
Um, I was just inquiring about the students who, who we have students uh, here, so I'm not sure.
Even if it's by Zoom, even if they wanna zoom in, that's fine. Okay, and who else? Melissa had a hand up and then Greg.
Um, sorry, in the last packet, there was a notice that Tim Williamsburg was gonna be retiring and.
Oh yes, thank you for bringing that up. We need to um, add that to the um, so that is a, a, a school committee appointment under the general laws.
Yep.
So um. We need to start the, the process of hiring. Um, Mr. Super, Assistant Superintendent, would you like to um, help us out with that?
Yeah, yeah, um, so we've uh, we've put out a posting, I'll make sure that it gets sent out to the committee to make sure that we have your feedback in case you wanted us to change anything. Um, and typically there's been a selection committee that was created, uh, including people from the general public. Um, you know, in the past we've used CPAC chair and other uh, parents who wanted to volunteer. And so we can propose a process to you all if you would like and then see if it meets your approval or take commentary on it. Um, but we are starting to have received, I think at this point, all those applications.
Well, good. I, I just, if everyone could just look second to the last page, uh, the disability category superintendent, that was a good addition to the um, packet this month and I didn't want us to miss that. Um, it's broken down and I think that's helpful, at least when I saw it, to get a understanding, a better understanding of. Um, not to categorize anything, but just to have a better understanding of those, and then the next page cuts about out-of-school district uh, placements. The cost associated to that is, so um, yes, thank you Jim for, for that and we'll put a committee together. I don't know, is anybody interested in serving on the committee? Can we have three people, Jim? Is that okay? All right, so we have three people, Brandon, Melissa and Eileen. Um, I haven't talked to Greg, I don't know if Greg would be interested, but anyway, um, we'll put it out one more time to the committee. So they would be on the uh, search committee, so that's good, we got six applicants. Okay, good, thank you Melissa for reminding me of that. I kept thinking, I gotta re. You remember, you remember, I didn't write it down, unfortunately. All right, Brandon was next.
Uh, two things, uh, I'm just curious on the uh, eight, uh, the enrollment report. Uh, if in the future we can get like a change column, because every month I'm like looking to see how much it's changed since the last report and I'm always fumbling to find where the last report is. Uh, so that would be helpful if that's possible in the future. Uh, and then the other thing I'd like to follow up on, uh, mayor is at one of the last meetings of our prior of the prior school committee, we had motioned and approved a student rep policy going to the state representative. I don't think that's moved at all. I, I don't think she's received any correspondence.
From us?
From the committee.
Okay.
Um.
That was to have a student?
That, it was to have, so to use our student rep policy, we had to go through a home rule petition process and that's what the former committee did, I'm happy to take a revote if that's what the will of this committee is.
So the home rule petition would come through us, it doesn't have to go to the council.
It has to go to the council, according to the city.
That would be the mayor and the council would have to approve it, so. We need to get on the agenda then.
On the council agenda?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because we have a unique school, so we have three, some schools within the high school, we wanted representation.
I mean, too bad, we, we don't have the authority as a school committee.
To just do it ourselves.
Okay, so noted, thank you. Anything else, Brandon?
No, thank you.
All right, who's next? Mr. Greg?
Yeah, so I, uh, this isn't, oh, mute. Um, so as far as the action items, um, I would like to ask the chair if we could schedule instead of a um, having a subcommittee meeting to discuss masking, that we have a special meeting where the whole group is involved. Um, there's been a, I shared out some documentation that I brought to the whole committee regarding um, mental health. The science that has come out, uh, health experts in the state, as well as a letter from Secretary Sutters and Secretary Pfizer indicating um, we're now in a twin dynamic of keeping mute. Uh, sorry, um, that we're now in a twin dynamic where mental health issues are alongside our Omicron variant. Um, so uh, there's conflicting uh, information from the various uh, science organizations across the world. The World Health Organization has completely different findings and uh, CDC, the European CDC has completely different findings and the American CDC, um, eighty percent of our country does not have a mask mandate. So I'm asking that we have a, um, I'm asking the chair to schedule a uh, emergency meeting with the whole group. Um, that would allow us to um, work within the current mask mandate provided by Desi. Uh, discuss those topics and uh, have a public comment as well.
So typically, I mean, I don't know what the.
No, no, I, I think, I, I, here's what I was gonna say, in this particular issue, there is so much and you just touched on just a piece of it. What I would count on the policy committee to do was kind of frame this in all directions and then come back to the rest of the committee so we can have a general conversation about the whole matter. And I think that's, I, I don't think we could do it in one night, I think it's gotta be done, you know, pieced together and kind of put it in columns here for us to understand it or we're gonna be here for two nights, going back and forth. And, and would that be helpful, Greg? I know it might be not on your timeline, but it would certainly help me to better understand the positions of everybody because I would assume that there will be a number of people that are gonna wanna speak on the agenda. So I wanna make sure we have all the information that policy committees have ample time to be able to go through that. So if you have a policy meeting scheduled, I would say you continue on with that and then work on that kind of framing it all with whatever we're gonna need as a body as the whole to help facilitate.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to Sal and Melissa offline, see maybe if we can schedule a separate meeting.
I mean, you just touched on, you just touched on, I counted six things that are, require a lot of information that to, and then to be able to properly communicate it to everybody to be fair and then let people kind of weigh in on it. Um, I, I don't think there, there's anyone left who doesn't have a position on it and is, is, wants to change the position. So I think it's just a matter of framing the information as a, a policy committee, we bring it back to the committee.
Is supposed to be the broad strokes, it's not the procedure or the practice? It's the broad strokes, um, and that's something to keep in mind. Um, and there is consequences if you don't follow um, the Desi's sort of statement.
Well, let's get that, that's what I'm saying, that's what I don't wanna have a debate about tonight. Just let's get all that out in the, in the committee so that the things that we hear and is it gonna conflict with Desi, all of that? So Greg, I would just ask you to help us kind of frame this thing so we're not spending an entire night getting up to date and doing the framing. If the committee.
Okay, can we, can we, can we take a, a mo, can we make a motion to ask the superintendent to share the current policy with the district? Parents?
Yeah.
To the, to the parents?
Well, it's in our policy. And I'm sure, you know.
I, I think you just put it up on the website or something.
Okay.
Or attach it to one of those Sunday or Friday meetings, say, here's the current policy, take a look at it. Melissa, you gonna add some?
Uh, I'm just thinking for planning purposes, whether we do it for policy subcommittee or whether we do it when we have our larger committee meeting, um, knowing in advance this is gonna be a popular topic. I think we need to evaluate the space that we're gonna have.
Yes, absolutely.
This is great for a lot of reasons, but I think between parking and all of the.
No, we'll need a bigger venue.
Yeah, absolutely, maybe city hall.
If we have, we've, we have a theater group working in there, so if, if that doesn't work out, we'll find them.
Thank you.
All right, so it's been referred to the committee, so noted everyone's comments. And um, now we'll move on to, so we've done the warrants, new and old business, anything else from anyone else? Is six o'clock working okay for these people? All right. And um, let's see, so now I think the only thing left is executive session, we are gonna.
I make a motion to go into executive session, session under chapter thirty-nine for contract negotiations.
Okay, it's a voice vote, go into executive session.
Are we returning?
Yes.
Yes, so we're starting, Mr. Parla?
Yes.
Josh?
You have to say it verbally.
You have to say it verbally, Josh.
Yes. This is Greg? Yes. Eileen?
Yes.
Ron?
Yeah, yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Brendan? And I'll be recorded as a yes, we will be returning it back into session somehow. And I'll be recorded as a yes. We will be returning it back into session somehow. All right, we are now back into session. We were in executive session. We're now back in the public forum. Um we have a couple matters to um to address. And uh so, Mr. Riley, would you just give us a brief explanation on the pay that was provided and along the way, there were some people that were missed? And and we're gonna be taking a vote tonight. Can you just give us a brief overview of that?
Absolutely. And so um the district is se- seeking to reconcile um some employees who were not paid the proper amount um when we made salary adjustments at the end of last year. That includes a few groups. That includes um folks who had left the district prior to the end of the school year. It involves active employees captured in that original uh distribution of funds. It involves our paraprofessionals who were paid the wrong yearly rate during our summer program. They've been paid the rate, the right rate since the beginning of this school year, but during their summer work, um they had not been paid the proper amount. And then it also involves all of our coaching stipends. So coaching stipends had been um the previously negotiated bachelor zero step um instead of being adjusted to the new step that was negotiated at the end of the year. And so there's some reconciliations that need to happen uh to the total amount of eighteen thousand dollars, five hundred, eighteen thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Are there any questions? If not, Brandon, do you have a motion?
Uh I'll make a motion that we approve the reconciliation payment of eighteen thousand and whatever dollars Jim just said.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second by Josh. And um any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, signify the usual manner.
Yes.
Yes.
And on the second matter, um was this, was there anything else or we're all set now then, right? Okay, so if we don't have any other business coming because of school committee? Okay, motion with general, all in favor? All right, rest of you can sit here until the next meeting. Thank you, everybody.